Oh, thank you.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Kong. Commissioner Banton.
Present.
Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Peoples. Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman.
Present.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Present.
Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Weber. Chair Strather.
Okay, Commissioner Weber did just answer and I'm present also. With that, we have a call. The first order of business, let me thank Rich Bradley for serving for in my place last week, last month. Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. You're more than welcome to have the gavel anytime you want. Just be sure to ask. With that, the first minute order of business is to approve the minutes as they were sent out. I hope all commissioners receive them. I would entertain a motion to receive, to approve them as submitted.
Don't move.
It was moved by Commissioner Bradley, second by Commissioner Weber. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Abstain.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Abstain.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Chair Bradley, I mean Chair Strather.
Give it up already. Abstain.
And the motion passes with six ayes and three abstentions.
Okay. Commissioner Bradley, see how quickly they want to give that seat to you. With that, we do have one resoning item today, this evening, that will be presented heard and it will be, there is a public hearing. If you're on for a public hearing, please at this time, in the next few moments, please put your name in the chat and mute yourself when appropriate and after the, after the public hearing is open and we will then, I'll then call and acknowledge those on the line that need, that would like to speak. Keep in mind that you will need to unmute yourself at that time and all individuals will get two minutes. The public hearing was posted at least fifteen days ahead in, in the City Journal. Postcards have been sent out immediately to the immediate property owners. Emails sent to the community organizations making them aware of the public hearing. Again, if you're wanting to speak at this, at that time when the public hearing is open, please be sure to list your name in the chat and we will acknowledge you. I will acknowledge you at the appropriate time. Right now, before we go any further, I think, Don, it is important that we do acknowledge the change in your staff because they, they will notice a missing face at this moment.
So, I will do two things. One, Alexa is on family medical leave. She's having a child. So, she's enjoying having been through a little bit of surprise, but at all.
Hard to hear you, Don.
Can you hear me now?
It's kind of muffled, but okay.
He was not prepared for me to call on him and I want to get him going, so.
Oh, I won't knock.
Yeah, go ahead, Doc. Yeah.
So Alexa is absent from having had a birth of a child, so she's on family medical leave, which is an exciting thing for her, but is a void in our staffing. But Earl is also referring to a generous thing he did, which is he had a chance to say goodbye to Cecilia, who has been lured and extracted and has moved to Texas to work for a development firm. And we certainly appreciate that she actually gave quite a bit of notice to help us get things in order, but is gone and this will be the first meeting without her. And thanks, Earl, for, for taking her to lunch and actually allowing me to come along because we do miss her. We are very pleased that we had her talent with us and she's on a trajectory for a multiple faceted planning related career, so. Good thing to have mentioned.
Thank you, Don. And I thought the commissioners, we wanted to, I wanted to try to get her on today, just acknowledge her at this point. But we wish her the best, her and her family and the challenge. And I know the staff that Don has is going to be competent and capable of handling the process forward and we wish the best to Alexa in her, in the birth of her child. So evidently something's happened on public here, on the planning commission that people are getting pregnant for whatever reason. With that, the item first is coming up is going to be Andrea making the presentation on 00922 RZ. Andrea, you're going to be taking the podium or are you on, there she is. And Don, would you go ahead and mute the, I don't sure, okay, you're muted already, the one you were using. Thanks.
Is this good?
There we go.
Good evening, planning commissioners and everyone. I am happy to be presenting our resolution for rezoning this evening. This resolution covers one parcel totaling approximately .09 acres in the Old North neighborhood. The petitioner here with us tonight is Jessica Gaines of Kendall Development and the site currently consists of a vacant lot. The petition is to rezone the parcel from F Neighborhood Commercial District to D Multiple Family Dwelling District. This rezoning petition is initiated based on the petitioner's desire to consolidate this parcel with four other parcels they own that are zoned D Multiple Family Dwelling District. This will bring all the parcels into the same zoning district. The petitioner will then re-subdivide the parcels and construct single family homes. The homes are planned to be two stories with the basement approximately 2,200 square feet. One thing to note on this project is that these buildings, these houses will be very sustainable. The petitioner plans to develop all electric solar powered homes with solar panels, inverters, energy storage batteries. Additionally, the utility systems will include heat pumps, energy recovery ventilation and tankless water heaters. The building construction includes structural insulated panels or SIPs, which will provide high insulating properties and these features contribute to lower fossil fuel use and lower cost to operate the building. This forwards the city of St. Louis's sustainability plan as adopted by the Planning Commission as a topical plan. Next, I'll orient you to the site and adjacent properties. First, an aerial view of the rezoning area. The area is bounded by Monroe Street to the north, Clinton Street to the south, Blair Avenue to the west and North 14th Street to the east. Next, you'll take note of the locator map at the bottom right. This is looking toward the site. Vacant lot. And next, this is looking west from the site, across the street. Next, this is new housing built within the last seven years. Next, looking south. Next. This is on the block to the east, an LR, a own vacant building. And next, some mixed use in the area to the south. And another mixed use north of the site. And last photo, but certainly not least, this is the Old North Rain Garden. Is a bio retention stormwater garden, which was part of a five year, $3 million rainscaping pilot program for MSD's Project Clear. And it can divert 31,000 gallons of stormwater from the city's combined sewer system, reducing basement backups and sewer overflows. In addition, provides an important asset to the neighborhood to combat urban heat impacts. Okay, and so the, again, the petition is to rezone from F Neighborhood Commercial District to D Multiple Family Dwelling District. And these are some of the land use entitlement changes related to the rezoning. The F Neighborhood Commercial District allows the current site to build up to three stories or 50 feet in height, while the proposed D Multiple Family District only allows three stories of 45 feet in height. Okay. The city's strategic land use plan designates the rezoning area as a neighborhood preservation area, which are areas where the existing housing and corner commercial building stock will be preserved and augmented with infill, residential and corner commercial development integrated with the immediate neighborhood and serving the immediate neighborhood. So this rezoning request is in compliance with the strategic land use plan. And the rezoning site is within the plan for the neighborhoods of the Fifth Ward and also the National Register of Historic Places through the Murphy Blair National Historic District, also known as Old North, St. Louis. The rezoning request is in compliance with the plan for the neighborhoods of the Fifth Ward and the National Register of Historic Places. And the National Register Historic Districts apply to demolition. Since the site is a vacant lot, a review by Cultural Resources, by the Cultural Resources Office is not applicable here. After review, staff finds the proposed rezoning request in conformity with the strategic land use plan and also the neighborhood plan for the neighborhoods of the Fifth Ward, which is adopted as part of the comprehensive plan and we recommend, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning request. And now we will hear from the zoning administrator, the petitioner and the public.
Thank you, Andrea. I don't have much to add. She pretty much covered the zoning part of it. I'll just.
Real quick, can you identify yourself and who you're with, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Mary Burton. I'm the zoning administrator for the city of St. Louis. So that I'll only add that rezoning this parcel would allow them to consolidate it with four adjacent parcels that they already own and those parcels are already zoned D. And then that would allow for the re-subdivision and the construction of the new homes.
Okay, thank you, Mary Bird. As Andrea mentioned, the other person on the line right now is Ms. Gaines, who is the petitioner. We will allow her at this time to go ahead and make any presentation or comments that she wants. I'll forewarn her, the more she can give us now, the better. She'll save herself on the answers and questions on the back end of that. Once, once she's done, then I will call for a motion to open the public hearing. But welcome, Ms. Gaines, and please go right ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jessica Gaines and I am with Kendall Developments. And I am making petition on behalf of the company today for the rezoning of those lots. And Andrea did an excellent job explaining exactly what we're trying to do, which is rezone the single lot to multifamily so that we can build residential houses and then re-subdivide the lots that we already own into six lots of identical size to build those single family houses. I do have a presentation that I would like to show you. So the name of the development is Newtown in Old North. It is a solar village. The next slide will show the lots themselves. So in the blue, you'll see our, what our phase one is, which is the phase that we're in now. You'll see seven lot, seven parcels there or lots there. We have ownership of the six that are closest to the building. The seventh lot that is on the end, we are under contract with, and so we have not closed on that. So that is not included or in question for rezoning at this time. And then the green indicate our next phase, which will be either more single family if we have the demand from the public for that, or our move into multifamily, which will be used with the same materials and technology that I'll describe today. The next slide, please. And so this is what the house, what the lot, block will look like once the houses have been built out. We have three models, which I'll show you, but we just kind of put a variety in there so that you can see the houses built out. They will be built to buyer specifications. So whichever model a buyer chooses, they'll be able to put on either a lot. The footprint is exactly the same for all of the models. The, basically the size of the home is the same for all the models. It's the facade and the number of bedrooms that will change for the interior of their home. So that allows us to put any model anywhere. And then here we have shown seven houses in anticipation of closing on that seventh lot, as mentioned before. I believe the next slide will show the three models. So we are offering three models to the pub. The dual model and a little bit of background, these three names, Jewel, Rochelle and Monet. Jewel is my great grandmother's name. Rochelle is my mother's middle name and Monet is my aunt's middle name. And so it's a family business and I wanted to incorporate that into the, the houses themselves. But the jewel model is the, our luxury model that has five bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. The basement is completely built out with two bedrooms in the basement level and a sitting area. And the main level is a large open area. The second story or the second floor has three bedrooms, including the master with a full bathroom in the hallway and a master bathroom with a walk-in closet as well. The Rochelle model has three bedrooms upstairs, including the master, same two bathrooms. And in the basement, the difference is that there are no rooms built out. However, it is drywalled and it has flooring and a full bathroom in the, in the basement. And then finally, our base model, the Monet model has three bedrooms as well and is identical to the other two models on the first floor and the second floor. The basement, however, is not built out at all and it has a rough in for a bathroom, which means that the plumbing is already underground in case the buyer would like to build the bathroom out at a later time. And then again, at the bottom, we put the streetscape. Please, the next slide. This, I just wanted to give you guys an idea of what we're doing with the space. So not only are we building the single family homes, but the diagram next to it shows that we have already planned for running new sewer lines, of course, to the houses, but also for that portion of the block as well as underground electrical, so that all of the houses, which are all electric and solar, can have the, the appropriate power going to them. We are also going to be putting sidewalks all around that block, which will be of porous material to allow for rainwater drainage on the block. And the same thing will happen with the alleyway. So porous asphalt material with crushed stone underneath and a mesh under that to allow for a slow matriculation of water into the sewer system so that we don't back up. So we're working in conjunction with that buyer retention that's across the street from us as well as, excuse me, sorry, I'm in the car working, as well as making sure that we don't have backups on the street for the residences and the rest of the neighborhood. So I just wanted to put that in there so that you understand that we are not only just building houses on the land, but also taking care of the entire block. The next slide, please. So this is talking about the technology that's going into the houses. Each house will have 18 solar panels as well as inverters for each solar panel. What this allows for is that, or, okay, so each house has 18 solar panels. There'll be 12 on the structure itself, on the house itself, and then six solar panels on the garport or the garage. These solar panels will produce enough electricity, enough electricity to power the entire home. So while Missouri law requires us to be hooked up to Amarin's grid, we don't anticipate the homeowner having to pull electricity from Amarin. We anticipate the homeowner producing their own energy throughout the day, using that energy at night and whatever is not used being sent to Amarin's grid and held for them until they are ready to use that energy. And when they need to pull some energy from Amarin, they will basically be using the energy that they've already generated from the houses. We have since this presentation changed a little bit our perspective on energy storage. And so in this image, you see a battery cabinet, which is the long, thin box next to the solar panels. Instead of doing a battery cabinet that would hold six individual, very small or micro batteries, we've decided to go with Tesla's Power Wall, which is one large battery that will fit up against a wall somewhere in the house and allow for the same amount of storage. But will, I believe, we believe work better with our technology than the, the inverter, I'm sorry, than the battery cabinet. And it doesn't require the homeowner to have to add batteries. We would have only started our homeowners off with three batteries. Going with the Tesla Power Wall, they will have the same amount of energy as six batteries. And so they wouldn't have a need to add to that system unless they chose to do so. The batteries are not required in order for the home to operate. They are actually an option. So homeowners can purchase this house with just the solar panels and the inverters and the homes will still function as they are designed to. The batteries are just an additive measure. The next slide, please. So Andrea mentioned some of the different technology besides the solar panels, one of them being a heat pump. So starting from left to right, we are heating and cooling the house using a heat pump or a mini split air conditioner, which basically conserves energy. It allows us to attach ductless vents to this heat pump and put it in separate, different rooms or each room that you want heated and cooled in the house. And it allows isolated climate control for whatever space that, that ductless vent is in. So that means that in your home, you can have one room that is 75 degrees and the other room that is 50 degrees, depending on what your preference is. Or you could have all of the vents off in the entire house except the particular part of the home that you are using at that point, which of course conserves energy. The next in the center is an ERV or Energy Recovery Ventilation System. Because the house is built with SIPs, structural insulated panels, which I'll explain on the next slide. Because the house is built with SIPs, it is basically an airtight envelope. The ERV pulls in clean air for the inhabitants to breathe and it pushes out stale air. The significance of using an ERV is that it removes a, the energy molecule from the air and pushes the old air out. And then when it pulls the new air in and filters and it makes it clean, it reattaches that energy molecule. So what, what that means is that in the summertime, you're not pushing out cool air, you're just pushing out stale air. And then the wintertime, you're only pushing out stale air, not your warm air that you're using to heat your house. And then finally, for the water heaters, each home will come standard with a tankless water heater, which is not your typical 50 or 40 gallon water heater. It's a water heater that heats on demand. We do have an option for our homeowners if they would like a 40 or 50 gallon water heater. They can upgrade to that as well. The next slide. So SIPs, these are SIPs, structural insulated panels. At the top left-hand corner, you'll see what they're made out of. So you'll see the brick there. You'll see the wrapping paper, which is usually what you see on the outside of homes or buildings that are under construction that have their OSB up. And then right up under that is the OSB board and then some sort of foam looking material. That is what our SIPs are made out of. They are oriented straight, they're OSB. So basically plywood with polyurethane on the inside. So kind of sandwiched plywood, polyurethane on the inside. It creates a very sturdy structure. And then as you can see on the bottom left-hand, the picture of the gentleman pushing or sliding that panel down into place, they fit together like puzzle pieces, kind of like a glove. They come together like so. And they create, as I mentioned before, an airtight envelope. So when you're building with SIPs, you don't use your traditional stick building for the envelope of the house. You only need wood or stick building when it comes to framing on the interior of the home. When you're building on the outside of the home, you use the SIPs and without adding any other technology, they create a home that reduces your energy bill and cuts it in half without using the solar panels. When we add the solar panels to that technology, we anticipate the homeowner only paying a fee, a service fee to Amarin for their energy every month, which would be between 15 and $50. So we're dramatically reducing the, the energy costs and that's our value proposition to the customer. And then the next slide. And that's it. So I, I kind of gave you a rundown of how it works. I just wanted everyone to be aware of exactly what we're building. I'm happy to answer any questions as possible, but these are the first homes that we're building and we plan to continue with this same building technology, no matter what we build. So whether we go to multifamily or mixed residential, I'm sorry, mixed use or commercial building, we'll be building in this way and it's to reduce the carbon footprint that we are, you know, creating here in St. Louis and hopefully encourage other builders to, to build in the same way. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Just very thorough presentation, very aspirational. There are a lot of questions that I know that we're going to have in a moment. I'm going to open the public hearing. But what I first want to do is if you're here for the public hearing, please be sure to include your name in the chat. At that point, I will call appropriately. There is a couple of questions I'll ask right now, just good to help out. Can you tell us what the, what your cost per square foot is? Because each unit, I think, is 2,200 square foot.
Yes, it's 2,200 square foot and it really depends on what you're doing. So the base model is $330, $330,000 for the model and it's divided by technically 1,700 square feet. And so that would be $188 and about 60 cents per square foot. That base model does not include the bedrooms in the basement.
Okay, so just for the commissioner, you're looking at about a 330, 330,000 start point for the housing, for the housing. Keeping in mind, I said I'll call for a public hearing. First, a move, I'll accept a motion for that.
Don't move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Weber, second by Commissioner Banton for opening a public hearing. At this point, we will claim the public hearing. I'm looking at the chat. I see no names at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You need to.
Can we take a vote on that, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank, thank you. I did move a little further on that one. A vote for open the public hearing. Thank you.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Hi.
Commissioner Goodman.
Hi.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Hi.
Commissioner Weber.
Hi.
Brother.
Hi.
And the motion passes to our present voting nine.
Uh, Alderman Kona's here.
Sorry, Alderman Cone.
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes with everybody present in voting nine.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is open. Uh, again, I will entertain any public com- comments. I see none on my slide. I will check the administrator uh, at Planning and Urban. Are there any public hearing notices there?
That is saying there are no uh, public hearing requests.
Okay, with that then, uh, hearing, no public hearing at this point. Uh, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
Second, previous role.
It was moved, moved by Commissioner uh, Weber, second about Commissioner Banton. Uh, and called for previous role by Commissioner Boyd. Hearing any objections? Hearing no objections, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, as I normally do, I will go through the commissioners um, and allow questions at this time. Keep in mind, though, commissioners are our task is not to challenge the design of the home. We make and discuss it, but not to challenge it. Uh, and that it will also be going to uh, the another committee for open uh, for public hearing after this at the Board of Aldermen. Uh, with that, uh, Alderman Boyd, any questions?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Given that we have not, there there is no members of the public that signed up, I'd like to just ask the petitioner, just to start off before we go into detail questions, to tell us how her relationship and involvement with the neighborhood and their comments about the project.
Yes, thank you so much for asking, because I did uh, mean to mention that. So, um, since the inception of this project, I've had a very close relationship with the Neighborhood Association, uh, Old North Neighborhood Association, or ONSLRG, uh, the Real Estate Group, and then Neighborhood Association. And so, um, I talk to them every step of the way. They've uh, provided a recommendation letter uh, for me for this petition. Um, and are actually very excited about the project as they are, they want to bring new homeowners into their area, homeowners specifically into their area. Um, they're excited about their um, property values rising as a, as a i- in relation, as a result of these homes selling. Um, and then one other thing that I I would want to add is that we do have uh, two home buyers already under contract for for two of the homes, so um, that's something else to note, but thank you.
Ms. Gaines, uh, can you describe any connection your, your, your family might have with uh, being in Old North?
Uh, so my grandfather, if you're, uh, so my grandfather grew up not in Old North proper, but in Carr Square Village. Um, and this was many, many, many years ago. And then about ten years ago, uh, we purchased a commercial building on the corner of North Market and North Florissant and made that uh, where we operate our business. So we've been um, in the community for the past um, eight to ten years um, in Old North. And so, uh, that is that's our connection. We've been here well before um, NGA was publicized, um, which is something that I like to say um, and have been involved in the community since then.
Thank you, and thank you, Alderman Boyd, for letting me jump ahead here. Thanks.
And who, and can you give us your grandfather's name? Cause I just feel like there's some reason that we should know that.
Uh, my grandfather is uh, Richard Gaines.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, with that, Alderman Boyd, any questions?
Uh, uh, sure. Um, wow, first of all, I want to compliment uh, Ms. Gaines for a good presentation. She obviously listened to the chairman, because if I was writing questions down and she was just answering them as I was writing them down. Um, but, uh, so I'll have maybe a couple. Um, very impressed with the um, solar panels. So will Ameren be able to buy back? I know you talked about you would get batteries and so they can probably do self-storage. Otherwise, I guess Ameren would store it for them until they need it, but will Ameren buy back energy?
Uh, so technically, um, so at, at this point, I don't believe so. Uh, technically, what's happening is they are, Ameren is basically crediting the homeowner for the energy that the homeowner is sending to Ameren's grid.
Got you.
Throughout the day that isn't used. So, um, the language buyback hasn't been used, um, but credit has been used.
Got you. Okay, uh, and just looking at the style of the homes, I was wondering, and maybe I missed it, are these container homes?
They are not, no. So, um, some of the, so, uh, they are the envelope is SIPs, but the um, exterior is siding, like hardy board siding. And some of the, or a couple of the models have a, a metal siding on them. So it kind of gives that feel, uh, specifically the jewel model that has the wood on the front at the top that has the um, atrium roof. Um, it has some uh, metal siding there. So I, I wanted to incorporate it, or we wanted to incorporate uh, the use of different materials um, in the house.
Looks like you guys really put a lot of thought in it. And again, I'm very, very impressed. And I know this is basically a zoning hearing, and it's a no-brainer to to rezone it. Um, but my final question is, and it's gonna be a very tough question. Will State Farm, Allstate, uh, any insurance company be able to compete to insure these homes?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
I only say that because I know Gaines is an insurance agent.
Right, right. Yeah, well, uh, to be clear, he's an insurance broker, so he's
Broker, okay.
He'll work with all of them.
There you go. So it's a win-win for granddad, right?
Right, exactly.
There you go. Nothing wrong with a win-win. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, but Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cone, and then Commissioner Banton, Alderman Cone.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, um, this is uh, really exciting to see these types of homes um, being built in Old North St. Louis. Um, I am curious, though, uh, cause we did have a experience with some down in, um, like the southeastern part of the city that were um, I mean, it it was a while back, but it was uh, kind of similar construction in terms of um, you know, weatherizing the buildings and making them secure from, you know, kind of external elements. And one of the learnings that I had, um, was that when these particular properties went vacant, there were some issues with uh, like mold, because there was no air circulation inside of the building. And so it ended up becoming a bit of a health issue, um, just because there wasn't any type of, you know, uh, moving air i- inside of the building. And so I'm wondering, you know, i- is that a concern at all for you with these properties or?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so that was one of my main concerns when learning about the SIPs uh, technology, because as you said, it's great for keeping everything out, but you know, we need air. And like you said, circulation to keep things like mold from growing. So our fix to that is using that um, ERV, that Energy Recovery Ventilation System. That's gonna be pulling air in and pushing stale air out um, and allowing for that, like that transfer of air back and forth. Uh, when we talk about the homes going, um, about the homes be- becoming uh, abandoned or or not necessarily abandoned, but vacant, maybe a homeowner is selling. Um, so from what I understand, it's customary for the homeowner to leave the utilities on during the sales process um, so that a potential home buyer can purchase that home or have it inspected before they purchase. Um, and so that's where we would win is that, um, with them leaving it on, that ERV is constantly running. So that's never off as long as um, the power in the home is off. And the, the other additive to that is that since it's solar, um, and so it's not, uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be running through Ameren for it to operate a hundred percent, um, that, that will still be uh, working and kind of, and kind of mitigating some of that as well. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. I was kind of wondering about the uh, the ERV and the solar. And so as the ERV would, I is, is there a way to kind of prioritize that in terms of, you know, the solar power that's generated by the properties so that, you know, and the event that it, for whatever reason, it ends up on the market for, you know, longer than anticipated or whatever, um, that it just doesn't run into those issues?
Yeah, that is something that I will look into to make sure that I can have a definite, this is what will happen if something like that, if it were for where to come to that. Uh, I, I know that that's the purpose of it in general, so that we don't suffocate as the inhabitants of it. But I will definitely work with, um, our engineers, our HVAC engineer and our architects to make sure that that, that happens.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Um, the other item, uh, you know, my colleague, uh, from the twenty-second ward kind of talked about this a little bit, but um, that's super exciting that you have like two contracts on properties already. Um, I'm just curious, like, do they have bank financing lined up? I know the real estate market is just so hot right now, so it's kind of difficult for me to even keep track of like where home prices are across the city as a whole. But, um, it just seems like three hundred thousand for Old North St. Louis seems a little on the high side. So I, I'm just curious if banks are, are actually lending that amount as well a- and that community. I mean, that would be exciting news if they are, so.
They are. It's very exciting. Um, what helps us there is that is the, are the value propositions, the solar being there, uh, the building with SIPs, um, the fact that they're all electric, all these things make it easier for banks to lend to their buyers at this price point. Because they can kind of adjust the debt to income ratio. The homeowner doesn't have to spend, they don't have to calculate a four, a potential four hundred dollar a month gas bill. Um, you know, two to four hundred dollar a month gas bill into their debt to income ratio on a monthly basis. And so that takes a big chunk out and is given back to the buyer as income that they have to support this mortgage. Um, I've also given, so I, I've given you the abbreviated um, presentation, version of the presentation, and I've give this same presentation to uh, I've given this same presentation to numerous banks, and they're all excited about it. I think once the technology is explained, um, they can grasp it and it makes more sense to them. And then they immediately begin start thinking, okay, how can we get people in here? What product will work for this? Um, and so, yes, the, the two buyers that we have, uh, one is uh, financed traditionally. Um, uh, they'll be FHA, which is very exciting. And then the, the first home buyer is actually doing a construction to permanent home loan. So they'll do a construction loan, and then that will be rolled over into a permanent mortgage. Um, which is, which is great as well, so.
Great. Do you, um, just, just following up on that particular question, do you have like a, a bank that's partnering with you or an organization like Justine Petersen that's partnering with you on these?
So, um, Justine Peterson actually wants to purchase a home, but we aren't partnering it on the whole project. Uh, they want to purchase so that they can um, lease it out. They're really excited about the technology and, you know, kind of want to be first to the table. We don't have a, a, a bank partner just yet. So if you know of any banks that may be open to that, we are open to that as well. As a developer, we are just having to take out uh, construction loans to build the houses ourselves, so um, that's, that's where we are with it. But we'd love a, a bank partner.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it. It was like a very exciting project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cone. Uh, Commissioner Banton.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, first of all, uh, echoing, great presentation. I work as an architect, and I think it sounds like you probably know a lot more about these can, uh, sustainable construction and design practices than probably a lot of architects I know. Um, so kudos to you. I don't know what your background is, but it sounds like uh, you really know what you're talking about. And I'm not surprised that once you give this presentation to banks, that they would be excited to uh, um, help finance some of these types of projects. So, um, great job. Um, you answered my question already about the six versus seven home. I, I'm assuming that once you get that final property under contract, you will be um, wanting to rezone that as well.
Yes, we will. Uh, yeah, I'll be right back.
Okay, um, and then my, my final question actually has to do with, um, in regards to the zoning. It looks like based off of the images that I'm seeing is that the front setback for these properties is further back than pretty much any other property that I'm seeing in the area, which would be I, I would interpret that as in violation of the zoning code. So have you had any uh, conversations with the neighborhood or the zoning administrator about setbacks? And has that been finalized yet? Cause this is a historic district and setbacks are an important part of, of this neighborhood.
The neighborhood, um, seems to be fine with it. Um, there are a few other um, houses in the neighborhood. So Old North is kind of, though it's a historic district, is kind of mismatched uh, with um, houses and developments in the past, I would say like twenty years. Um, our setback is more of a traditional set setback that you would, I guess, see like, um, in the center, more central part of the city, um, having a larger front yard. The, every presentation I've made to the neighborhood has been well-received. Um, so zoning, that would be, um, uh, it did not come up when I spoke with Mary or Andrea or, um, Dylan, but I'm, I'm here for it now, for sure, so.
Maybe a question to Mary or Don. I, I, I believe there was a draft, and I don't know if it fully got passed out for sort of standards for building new construction in historic districts. And part of that sort of set of standards was matching the setbacks of historic structures. Is that an actual like rule or set of rules or guidelines? Um, and would you be, would, would Ms. Gaines be expected to match the setbacks for existing buildings in this area or district?
This district requires all of the zoning.
I can speak to the zoning aspect of it. That will come up when we review the building permit. And we'll look at the lot. Since these are empty lots, we'll do something called a building line survey, where we'll try to establish what the building line survey is in that block. Um, but we won't do that until the point that she applies for a building permit. The historic district portion of it, that's really more in Don's area, but I believe it will get a separate review if it's in the historic district.
It's not in a local historic.
Oh, so that would only apply to local historic districts, not national historic districts?
Don, did you hear the question?
Yes, that, that's, that's, Jake, that's true.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Well, um, I would encourage you to just take a look at that, Ms. Gaines, if, if you will. I think having front setbacks aligned and create that building wall there is an important aspect of the neighborhood and maybe make sure you get community support for that as well. But overall, great project. I think it's super exciting. In fact, I had a friend ask me, it's like, have you seen these new homes they're proposing in Old North? And he was thinking about maybe going to take a, take a closer look and tour. So, very exciting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Boas.
Um, great project. I, I really, most of my questions have been asked already. I do agree with Jake about the setback, um, both from the, the character of the neighborhood and plus you'd get a bigger backyard, which would be nice. Um, but really great project, and it's exciting to see, um, you kind of building on the um, positive features of that MSD Ring Garden. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley.
It just a couple of comments. Great project. Um, thanks for what you're doing with it. I think, um, uh, Alderman Cone and Jake, um, are residential architectural experts here, have covered most of it. I'm just an engineer, but what I know about structural, uh, insulated panels are uh, from the, you know, the outside moisture penetration. So it sounds like you got that covered on the interior wall finishes for fire protection. Sounds like you got that covered. So great job there. I did hear you say something about permeable asphalt in an alley. Is that correct?
Yes, um, yes, uh, porous asphalt on the top and then a crushed stone on the bottom and then uh, mesh under the crushed stone. Um, and I believe our civ- uh, our civil engineer did that based on like MSD's uh, requirement. And I believe our civil, our civil engineer did that based on like MSD's requirements.
And so keep in mind, I'm over the public right of way in my position. And what I would highly recommend is, and you'll do this when you go through reviews for the city taking these eventually, is that, you know, alleys have one of our heaviest designed vehicles that drive down them with refuse trucks. That's why they were brick back in the day. That's why they're about a nine to 10 inch concrete section on rock today. The permeable is great. It's a great idea. Have no issue with it as long as it's durable and it's maintainable. Because if you have a problem with it, it's only going to create a problem for us. But again, great project. I'm sure you'll work through all those details. Thanks for all your efforts in setting.
Thank you. I will, I'll look into that, make sure that's zipped up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Peoples?
Well, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodman?
No questions. Great project.
Thank you. Commissioner Pfeffer?
No questions. Appreciate the investment in green infrastructure for the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Weber, who he was on multiple phone calls a moment ago.
Yes, I have two. Agreed. Very nice project. Thank you for doing this. What is the big building on the one corner that's there?
That is a building owned by Rize, R I Z E. And it has, it's two townhomes and they are occupied. They take very good care of it. I've introduced myself to them.
Great. The last question is, could you give me, once you get the zoning and everything, what's the timeline to start construction and when will it finish?
So I want to start construction as soon as possible, especially for the people who are excited about being the first to jump in the pond on this project. So after this zoning, then we will zip up our construction documents, taking into consideration the setbacks and alleyways as we just talked about. And then next we'll be going to permits and then we'll be, as soon as we get the green light from permits, we'll be ready to build. The construction period is a 90-day process. It's a very short construction period because of the SIPs. So if, if I'm giving myself enough room, I'm saying six months from now max. And that's giving myself or our company three months to get, you know, from this point to construction documents and permits and approval.
And, and the garages will be built in the same way?
Yes, so the garages, so they're garports. So there's only one closed side and that's the side on the alley. It has a garage door and the fence comes to the garage door. So you have a completely enclosed property line. The inside of your property line is open with the car pad. So those will be traditional stick builds, but they will have three solar, I'm sorry, six solar panels on top. And then we have an option for a charging station for electric vehicles as well.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gaines, you have done a wonderful job and I applaud you and I think all the commissioners have. You did just answer the one question for timing. As you said, a 90-day construction time, timeline, you hope it's six months, you can open the door on one of them. What's the life cycle of one of these houses? What do you expect this thing to last without investment, without additional investment?
Yeah, honestly, I haven't looked into the exact time, but the SIPs, they, they don't deteriorate. Any place that we would have wood that's on the exterior, for instance, the decks or the porches are made out of either concrete or composite and that doesn't deteriorate. So I would assume without putting a number on it, and that's a great question. I'll definitely, I'll have a number for you the next time I see you. But I would assume that like my great granddaughter could see this house and aside from maybe wanting to paint some of the siding, be walking into, and of course, update the inside because who knows what it'll look like 60 years from now. But aside from that, I think she would still have a functioning home and the structure would still be there.
No, I appreciate that. I guess with, with the amount of technology being built into the house, obviously it's very, it's very dependent on that and we know technology does not grow old. So that, that was kind of my questioning there. And is this a Genesis project or is it, or have you seen these somewhere else? Or are these offspring of something you've noted, you've done or?
Yes, so in St. Louis Park Place or St. Louis Place Park, maybe a year and a half ago, a company by the name of Net Zero built three of these houses and they kind of sat on the market unfinished for almost a year. I had the opportunity of shadowing them and basically learning everything that they did wrong with that project. And I've said, well, the idea, the concept is great and it should definitely be implemented into building technology here in St. Louis. And so I kind of just tweaked it and asked the questions that weren't asked initially. So for Kendall Developments, this is a Genesis project in this scale and being available to the public and not being a custom home. This is a Genesis project, but building with SIPs and building with solar has been around for, I would say, at least 40 years.
All right. And then my last question, and this is just kind of a pricing thing. You mentioned your Tesla power blocks and your battery add-ons. What's the upcharge for a customer? Use it, you know, if you're going in at 330,000, what's the upcharge on that house just for conversation's sake?
Yeah, so you're looking at an additional, I'm sorry, you're looking at an additional 15,000 for that battery alone. And then we have an optional upgrade of $3,000 for the charging station. And then we also have a smart element, which basically is taking your home and making it so that you have motion sensor lighting. You have basically a panel on the wall that controls everything from your climate to your, the shades or the curtains in your home, to the lighting, to sound. And it's also voice controlled and that is between 10 and $30,000, depending on what you choose to outfit in your home.
Okay, I appreciate it. Again, I echo all the comments and compliments that the commissioners have given you. I think you did an outstanding presentation in detail. As I think Alderman Boyd said, you listened very well to answer all of them early and you still got a few questions at that. With that, as I said, our chart is really simple to simply provide a proper zoning for this lot. And I will entertain a motion, which I think Alderman Boyd said was almost, almost faultless.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been, it's been, okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Weber, seconded by Commissioner Cohn. I heard a call for previous role. Any objections? Hearing no objections for previous role, it has passed. Again, there you go. It is now going to go to Board of Alderman for your, I'm not sure which committee it goes to at this point, but we commend you on your work. And you've got two engineers who didn't even get thirsty enough to ask more than two or three questions. So you did a great job. You did a great job at that. So thank you very much and we look forward to seeing you very soon on that closing of the next lot that you'll be asking us to rezone.
Yes, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate.
Thank you. With that, thank you commissioners for your engagement and your acceptance of that. The next item on the agenda is really delegated items. And Don, I don't know who's doing the delegates.
They're all on your packet. If there's any questions, we'll entertain them, but those delegated items over the last month.
With that, I'll entertain any questions from any commissioners. And hearing none at that.
One more, more item to, to think about. One is, A, I'll think about Ms. Gaines the next time we have an opening on the planning commission for positions that she was qualified for. That would be terrific. And then second, Alderman Boyd made mention of looking like a container home. And just as you've heard and talked about the architecture, there is, if you stand in the middle of the street of St. Louis Avenue at 14th Street in front of Crown County Kitchen and look to the north, there's a three-story container home.
Yes.
A bit of variety. The other thing I want to tell Andrea, that we wanted to reach out to Ms. Gaines because there was, the city, in conjunction with Old North a number of years ago, had a grant from EPA, or actually they provided a particular consulting service to look at Old North in relationship to environmental issues and alternative energy. And we want to connect with her, Andrea, because maybe making a reference to that might help her with some of the banks. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. With that, any other items at this point? I'm seeing none. At this, we are scheduled for May the 11th, I think it is. I think that was the date I saw. Is that, yes, May 11th for the next meeting. With that, I wish everybody a happy holiday, Easter, if you celebrate that. If not, just have a great weekend. Either way, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting, adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Meeting's been moved and adjourned. Thank you very much again. Please dial past our best to Cecilia and keep us informed of Alexa and hope that she and her family are well at this point. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks all.
Everyone.
Take care.
Have a good night. Bye.
Thank you.
Be safe, Tracy. Safe travels.